Okay, great. Thank you. So this special board meeting of the Board of Education for January 11, 2022 is called to order. Welcome, Mr. Cruz. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to consider complaint number 2022-01. In accordance with Board Policy 4.50.032P, the district follows certain procedures for resolution of formal complaints by students, parents, guardians, and people who reside in the district in order to resolve formal complaints in a fair and timely manner. If during this meeting issues pertaining to confidential student records arise, we will need to move into executive session after first addressing in a public meeting the components of the complaint that do not pertain to confidential student records. If that happens, following the executive session, we will return to a public meeting to vote on your complaint. You'll have five minutes to provide your comments tonight. And following your comments, board members may follow up with questions for you or staff. Mr. Cruz, would you like to begin?
Sure. I know many of you guys were basically campaigned off of the achievement gap and closing the achievement gap. I don't know if you guys really understand fundamentally what that means. I've been raising these concerns since my kids have been in elementary school regarding the misalignment, poor instruction, the lack of rigor, and the non-culturally relevant curriculum that is being implemented, that is outlined in policy. So I don't really understand. So I really, I tried to be very detailed in my complaint to really kind of show you in details the misalignment that is happening. I'm actually showing you guys all the reason why we actually have an achievement gap. So even though my children may be receiving straight A's in middle school, they may be receiving E's in elementary school, as I stated before, however, they are not still passing the state assessment. And why is that? So if you guys are on this campaign of closing achievement gap, you should really delve deeper into my complaint and really ask deep, tough questions. So I'm just curious of what type of research you guys have done thus far. I pretty much spelled everything out. So I just want, I'm just curious if you have questions. So this could kind of help me discern if you guys care or not.
So I appreciate that. That's a really good question. I'll just say that I'm not an educator. And I appreciate you bringing these things forward. And we're here now to listen. You have five minutes to lay out, you know, your complaint that, which is why we're here tonight.
I thought I already spelled it out. So I'm kind of confused. I don't, I don't know what exactly the protocol is. So I already spelled everything out in the complaint. So I already had a list of questions. I emailed you guys all some questions, some follow-up questions. So so I don't know what else do I need to present if everything is pretty much laid out and spelled out in front of you. So please help me understand this.
Sure. Thank you. Yes. I mean, we all have the complaint packet in front of us. And you've got two items on it. Sorry, I'm having problems with my, my, my vision tonight.
Chair to pass. I think, I think really this is just.
And I'm not able to see what's going on either.
Terry, is there some way you can?
It's fixed now. Thank you.
And do you have your camera on, Mr. Cruz? Because we can't see you either.
No, I do not have my camera.
Okay, that's fine.
I think Chair to pass. And just, Mr. Cruz, to answer your question, this is just an opportunity to recap anything you provided. We have been provided all the materials and have read through it. So it's certainly nothing you have to do. It's just an opportunity if you wanted to recap anything. And I think you've already done, you know, some of that. So Chair to pass. I don't know if.
Yeah. So there's basically two things on the table that we're talking about. One is the, the main complaint, which is have to do with the implementation of the instructional experience expectations and the design found in the guaranteed viable curriculum. And you mentioned the misalignment of I can't remember, I didn't get the notes down, but learning outcomes to the GVC, lack of rigor in academics, and lack of cultural resources and cultural curriculum. Is that correct?
Yeah. So let me, let me break it down to you like this. So if you, if you look at the elementary school report card, right? So the current report card, if you look at it, I don't know if you guys saw it or not, it would state if my, if my kid is meeting or if it's exceeding benchmark standards. And it has a list of standards that is itemized in the report card. So what I've been trying to express to you guys all for the last few years is that even though my children may be exceeding in these report cards, however, when they take the state standardized test or if they take some MAP assessment, they're not receiving the same type of achievement results. Does that make sense?
It does, yes.
Okay. So what I've been trying to explain is that there is a misalignment. There's, 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 when I say misalignment, what is spelled out in the state standardized test? The standards and everything that is listed that our kids are being assessed on is not being instructed. So how can we administer an assessment if my kids are not receiving those type of standards? Therefore, we're seeing the results that I'm seeing. So even though they receive an E on the PPS report card or receive an A, now they're in middle school. However, if I, if I want to know what reading level they're at, if I want to know what writing level they're at or math level, then you were, you're going to see different data. The data is going to show that my, they're not meeting benchmark. They're not at grade level, even though the report card is stating something different. Does that make sense?
We have two staff here. We have Regional Superintendent Margaret Calvert and Chief Academic Officer Dr. Proctor here to maybe explain to us why we would see, why we would see that discrepancy.
So, good evening. Good evening, Mr. Cruz, directors. In the discussions that surfaced initially in Mr. Cruz's complaint from this year, there was discussion in particular about the alignment of standards that are being taught in class. And to Mr. Cruz's point, that the middle school report card is not a standard spaced report card, right? So the elementary report card is standard spaced. When we moved to middle school, we are working off of what you would traditionally see as, you know, an A through F report card. The, the process of, when we were looking through and responding to, what does that look like? What are the, what are the priority standards and the standards that should be happening within the course? And I think that that was where a lot of the discussion initially started was like, well, how is that showing up? What are we expecting students to learn? And then finally, the question was, is that aligned with the, for example, the MAP assessment that would give us some interim measures before we take the state test, which has been suspended for the last couple of years due to the pandemic? So I think part of what, in the, is it in response to the concerns, that how do you, how do you determine, like if we're saying that these are the things that we're holding up as, as the district, how are we sure that that's showing up in the classroom? So one of them is, how does, as a, as a parent, how will that show up and how would you know? And then as, how are we looking for fidelity of implementation? How are we looking, how are, what are some of the things that we're doing as a district? So I think that as we went through and had the conversation, we acknowledged that the, the report card does not match standards, right? At this point, because it's not, it's a different, a different piece. But I think the, the key is, what is the alignment with the, the learning? And how is that showing up, for example, on the MAP assessment? So is what's on the MAP assessment aligned with what we're teaching? So these are some of the pieces. And then how do you use that information for the MAP assessment? Then to inform instruction moving forward? So those are some of the pieces that, that we were digging into along with Mr. Cruz. Part of what I would say is that, you know, this is as part of the office of school performance, what we're seeing is, how do we operationalize the standards? And what does that show up as? And how do we then communicate that back? So part of the role that we play is to work with our area senior directors, the principal and the teachers, to see how close the alignment is and what's surfacing. And that that's sort of the role, that's one part of the role. Dr. Proctor's part and the partnership is around, what are the standards? And are we, you know, and what are the measures that we're using? And so it's this collaboration of the two parts of the system that we're bringing together. But then it should show up in the classroom. So.
Yeah. So, you know, in having conversations with Mr. Cruz, I do indicate to him and I share that he's asking the right questions. He has a clear understanding of what standards-aligned instruction can look like and what happens when he's seeing results for his children that are, that appear not to be aligned. In his original complaint, you know, the question was also his concern, not only his concern with the GVC not being aligned to his students' report cards, he also was seeking more information about his, his students' class syllabi. And he also wished to review his students' course syllabi to ensure that his kids were learning specific targets aligned to the standard. In addition to, you know, just being overall concerned about the students, not only at his, his students' school, which is Harriet Tubman, but also at Boise Elliott. I had conversations with Mr. Cruz and definitely, you know, as Dr. Calvert says, that there is a partnership that occurs when parents have this type of concern about their own students' education, that we take the concern and the, the questions to the school administrator, who is then able to kind of, as a midpoint, level up the conversation to an area senior director, but also have direct conversations with his staff, who would be the classroom teacher of the students. I also advise that parents have an opportunity to do a parent-teacher conference to get a handle and understand firmly where their students are in their learning. And it also affords the parent an opportunity to ask those specific questions of the teacher about the coursework and the curriculum and what, what specifically, you know, are my children being taught? You know, we had conversations and what we resolved in the first round was that the area senior director would work directly with the principal of Tubman in meeting with Mr. Cruz and addressing his concerns so that he would have a clear understanding of, you know, setting up meetings with teachers, having a clear understanding of the curriculum that is being taught at Tubman to his two students there. I have, in my camp of work, as part of my role and what I have done in coming into the district, is with the same types of questions that Mr. Cruz has, I ask those same questions to understand what does standard-aligned instruction look like here at PPS? What are our current practices? And where are there gaps that we need to bridge in order to have a more desired outcome for students and student performance? And, you know, in my work, I am building the capacity of my own team and staff so that we can go out into schools. We've done one series of school visits and instructional reviews and, and walks and are really able to just really break down some of the things that we see in instruction. And, and, you know, part of the understanding that we have today is that we are in a pandemic and not only have our students experienced some gaps, but we want to definitely shore up our teacher skills in those areas to ensure that we are aligning the curriculum, the standards, and the instructional practices to meet student needs. In addition, we are engaged deeply in curriculum adoption. Curriculum adoption is very important in setting the stage of what is taught to children. It takes some of the guesswork out, out for teachers who, you know, sometimes feel like they have to, you know, pull various resources. But when we adopt high-quality aligned curriculum, then we can also build upon that curriculum with teacher practices through training and development to ensure that there are better implementation of the standards, or better implementation of standards-aligned instruction. So I think that's where we are. The second part of the concern that we addressed was the concern for the lack of answers to his questions with school leadership. And I'll have Dr. Calvert speak to how ASD and the principal are partnering with Mr. Cruz.
So I appreciate the doctor in front of the Calvert, but I'm not there yet. So.
I keep wanting to give her a doctorate.
Everybody does. We're all in agreement.
We're speaking it into the universe. Do it.
Thank you. So I think one of the pieces that, as we went through, there was a specific question about how, what are the indicators that your students on track, right? So this is part of where we've been employing MAPS testing for both English Language Arts and also in math. And while we were in distance learning, it was, it was a challenge to administer the test. So being back in person has afforded us an opportunity to do that this year. We've been able to do that this fall. And as this surfaced at the beginning, this was, I believe that we were right in the, sort of the testing window and grades and report cards are coming out at the same time. So I would, I think that inappropriate, we have not had the chance to do this yet. But I think one of the pieces that would be helpful is to look at, how do you, how do you reconcile to Mr. Cruz's question? Here's a performance on the MAP assessment at this time of the year. Here's what the report card is saying. Is it, are they, are they aligned? How do you reconcile? How do you interpret what that means? What does that mean for your child? So I think that that would be an appropriate next step moving forward. And I think the other piece that, that I would say that we're looking for, how do you use information? So we gather a lot of information about what student works and student thinking, how we're using that to inform instruction, I think is another key point that Mr. Cruz surfaced. So you're gathering information, you're seeing student work within the classroom, you're looking at what happens on a MAP assessment, for example. Then what are you going to do? And I think that this is the work that we're, you know, as an office of school performance, we go in and we work not only with, that we look at that with principals and then say, how do you lead that professional learning with your staff as well? And then it should show up in the classroom. So I think this is, that sort of flow and that feedback loop is critical as we move forward.
I have a question for Mr. Cruz, which is, I know that you are a former educator and I remember when you brought forward a complaint in the past with these, some of the same sort of concerns. And my question is, tonight, what, what is it that you're seeking that we can do this evening to sort of resolve this complaint for you? What is it that you're hoping that you didn't get in the Step 1 and Step 2 responses? Because I think, you know, what you started with tonight, saying this is what we ran on, many of us, and what, you know, we've heard from both Regional Superintendent Calvert and Dr. Proctor is that these are the questions the district is asking. I know that these are the questions that drive Superintendent Guerrero and inform our strategic plan and are the heart of our work when we're really being student-centered. And I know we're not there yet. I mean, I think that's the reality that we all speak to. And I know that that's incredibly difficult when we think of students like yours that are in the moment. And I also know, and I really appreciate from your complaints, that you are concerned about your students as an involved parent, and you're also concerned about the wider district, that you've made that really clear, that this isn't just a single parent advocating for your children, but a parent advocating for, and an activist and a former educator advocating for all students in PPS like many of us do. So what, what is it that you're hoping would help you resolve this concern that you have tonight that we could do?
Number one, I'm hoping that you guys see the holes, number one. I'm hoping that you, you have a fundamental understanding of what the achievement gap is. I'm hoping that you will understand how we can potentially close the achievement gap. And I'm hoping that you have an understanding of what is actually taking place. Because what I'm providing for you guys all is the root. This is, this is the root. This is, when we talk about the achievement gap and the reason why we have that, this is one of the main roots. So I'm hoping that this, this can be an opportunity for the board, number one, to have a deeper understanding of what the achievement gap is and then have some, I would say, some, some overstanding as well and what to do next, right? So again, I'm glad you addressed the fact that this is just not about my, my children, but this is a systematic problem. And that's the reason why I tried to frame this, this complaint as more of a systematic thing. I didn't, I didn't want to focus on the detailed experience of my children because then we're going to talk about personnel, we're going to talk about teachers and things like that. I don't want to get into that because that's going to get more into the weeds. So I want you guys to look at this as a systematic issue. What can we do systematically to solve this issue? So I guess for me is, is I need to know, because like I stated before, all of you guys ran on the achievement gap campaign. But I need to know, do you guys understand what the achievement gap is? And do you, and I'm actually, I'm giving, so use this complaint as an allelyoo. So this is an allelyoo of, okay, let's look at the, this issue and what can we do to solve it? So I'm going to revert the question right back to you. I need to know what you understand.
Well, and I think, I'm going to answer because I'm the one that asked the question, Mr. Cruz. This is Director Lowry. I mean, I think we are looking at a complete middle school redesign as part of our understanding of, you know, how our middle schools are configured now doesn't meet the developmental place that our students are and that we need to reconfigure that. I know that when you were with us before, we talked about that we need to do a report card redesign. And that was one of the things that was sort of on our list before March of 2020 happened. And I know it's something we're still working on. I think if you look at our strategic plan, if you look at our board goals, those are the things that, that we're focusing on. You know, our four board goals are making sure all of our students are on track for third grade reading, sixth grade math, because that's an indicator of their ability to do advanced math, looking that eighth graders are ready for high school through eventually a middle school portfolio, and then that our high school students are ready for the world beyond their schools through participation in either a CTE strand or an art strand or through certain, you know, licensure designations like AB IP, AB IP. I said those backwards. IB AP, high, biliteracy, all of those. So I think you're, you're getting to the crux of what we see as the heart of the problem in our district and what I believe all of the board is working on. And my frustration, I think, is yours, is that it's slow to turn a $50,000, a $50,000 student district. And I'm going to stop talking because I've apparently lost the ability to do so coherently.
I wanted to respond to your question as well, Mr. Cruz. First of all, I want to thank you for bringing this forward and allowing us to have this conversation because it really is the heart of the matter. And I also want to be really blunt and say that my experience is exactly the things that you are pointing out here are comments that I have heard from our leadership. And particularly when people come in who are new to the district, this is exactly what our leaders have seen, including our superintendent, when they come through our classes. And so the first step in addressing that was just to create a GVC and to make sure that we had a standard spaced curriculum that was consistent across the district. The next, the next step there is, you know, really providing meaningful training to our teachers to align their instructional practice to the GVC. I know there's a lot more work to be done there. Our superintendent is very, very protective of those professional development days in order to have the time with educators to work on exactly what you're talking about. But there's, there's still a lot of work to be done. And I think I'm really interested in this question about the communication piece with parents. And so when you see that your child is getting good grades, meeting the expectations that the teacher has relative to the, the expectations in the classroom, but still not meeting proficiency, that is not only a failure of the system, but it's also sort of a breach of the promise with our, with our families in terms of communicating about where, where their kids are. So I, I do, I am interested in hearing more from Dr. Proctor about the revisions slated to the report cards and then also just anything more specific about professional development plans around just working on these instructional practices.
So happy to share a little more. And, you know, as, as we all recall, a few weeks ago, we went through detailed data, map data that spoke about where our students were achieving across the district. And we saw clearly where there are, you know, some, some disparities in the data. Likewise, in an observational way, we conducted a number of, the Office of OTL conducted a number of classroom visits and gathered some soft information as far as the instructional practices that we see across PPS. And what we saw is, just as the data spoke about misaligned outcomes, we saw misaligned instructional practices. Because we're just not there yet, as, as was said before. And with that, what we have moved forward with is working with our OTL department in breaking down the strategic plan and our goals for instruction. And we are in the process now of developing an instructional framework. An instructional framework is very important because it gives us a common language that answers the question and says, what does good instruction look like here? Whether it's here at PPS or, or any other place, but what is good instruction? And what are those components that are necessary for good instruction to occur? One of those components include a high-quality curriculum. And that's why we are engaged deeply in the curriculum adoption process. Another component, again, is defining the components of instruction and defining the foundations of instruction. Here at PPS, we are a common core district. And we need to ensure that all of our instruction is aligned to the standard. And so we are engaging in developing not only the OTL staff, but also developing a series of professional developments for teachers that will be targeted specifically for that purpose. To, it's designed, it will be designed to demonstrate for teachers how they can plan instruction in a way that is not only aligned, but allows for them to ensure that students have access to the grade level expectation of the standard. Often what you see in the example that Mr. Cruz raised is that when you look at a report card and a child's report card says that they're passing everything and that they're proficient in all things, yet you measure it to a state standard, it speaks very clearly that there is a lack of rigor in the instruction. A lack of rigor points directly to that students do not have access to the grade level expectation of the standard. So we could be in a fifth grade class and if the student does not have access to fifth grade rigorous instruction and rigorous curriculum, then we're doing a disservice and we're not preparing students for meeting that. Yes, we have students, you will hear the argument, and it's so true. We do have students that come and they are not at grade level. But it takes a highly skilled teacher who is able to assess where a student is and scaffold the instruction upward so that not only could they meet the, the grade level need of the student, but also ensure that they are giving the student access to that grade level content. It is in giving access to that grade level content that you're able to ensure that there's rigor and better alignments. And then with that, you'll see better outcomes. So those are some of the things that we're working on in our department. I had a great conversation with Mr. Cruz a couple of days ago and I shared with him some of the vision and some of the things that we are working towards. And I'm really excited about that work and so is my team. And, you know, we just look forward to aligning better our data and our instructional practices so that we could see more improvements for children.
I just want to say something real quick. I know some of you guys on the board have been, I've been at this for a very long time. Um, as probably I would say since 2017, uh, I just want to share this quick story really fast. Um, hold up for one second, I have a crying baby, hold on.
I just want to lift up as we wait for Mr. Cruz to return that I believe that one of the steps we're taking is having you, Dr. Proctor, be our Deputy Superintendent of Instruction. I think that your experience and wisdom and everything you just laid out is going to be a huge asset to our P P S students. So thank you for your willingness to serve in that role.
Thank you, Director Lowry.
Mr. Cruz, can I, can I go ahead or are you ready to? I, I don't want to go.
Go ahead, I'm Director Brim Edwards.
So just, uh, Director Brim Edwards, and, um, I appreciate, um, this conversation we're having again because we had it, um, four years ago and I was on my first, well, my second term of the, of the board. And, uh, I also appreciate, um, you raising it because this really brings back, um, some memories, um, not just from what other parents told me, but my own experience with, um, one of my kids in middle school. And there actually was a standards-based, P P S has, has a standards-based report card. And, um, it was really sobering to go from elementary, a little bit from the elementary school where, you know, a lot of effort translated into good grades to going to a standards-based report card where even if you tried, but you weren't proficient, um, it was clear. And, um, I, I guess I'm, I'm appreciative that we've identified the questions and a path um, because it's, um, hard for me as a parent, as a non educator parent uh, who went, went through, uh, you know, pretty traumatizing 10 years with P P S on this very issue is that, um, our report cards aren't providing, um, parents yet with accurate information to be able, to be able to help and advocate for their students. And, um, as I think about it, because one of the things of the standards-based report card is that we had in some of our schools at the middle grades was it did like provide parents with real information like, oh, you're several, you know, you have a lot of work to do in really specific areas. Um, and allowed for challenging, but really good conversations that I think ended up helping the students versus passing students along with thinking that they were on track. So, uh, my question is, and I, I love, um, the scaffolding and the framework you've provided. And, um, I'm interested in knowing sort of the, sort of the, like, do we have a roadmap? Is there an, and so we've identified the question. Um, I have a lot of confidence that, um, you know, the path to take. Um, but, you know, share with, you know, parents and Mr. Cruz about how, like, when are we going to get to that point where, or when do you think we're going to get to that point? Or what, what do you need, what would you need from the board in order to get to that point? So that parents find report cards as the tools, a way that they can advocate for their kids, they know where they are, how to support them. And same thing with, for, um, you know, the teachers who are in the, the following grades for kids.
Can I, can I share this quick story? Um, I, I want to kind of bring this home, um, and I want to turn my camera on for this. So basically, um, so let me give you a story. So I've been at this issue for, since 2017. There's a young man who's been in the same classroom as my, my, my son, right? And I've watched this young man since, uh, I would say second grade, second, third, fourth. And I've watched him be passed each grade, right? So now my son is in seventh grade and the same student who I seen get passed since second grade, third grade, fourth grade is now in the seventh grade. He is in the same English class as my son. He is still struggling with reading that he struggled since second grade. Since I've been raising this issue of lack of instruction and for those type of kids, right? Even though my son is going to be okay because I'm an educator, he's going to be reading at home. I'm going to be doing extra writing. I'm going to be doing tons of extra things for him. However, he's still in the classroom receiving a mass, not proper instruction. However, this, this other young man, right, who's fallen in the cracks, who cannot read at grade level, who's now doing seventh grade work. Now it's about to move to eighth grade and cannot read at third grade or second grade level. It's now doing eighth grade work. So what do you think eventually he's going to do? Huh? What do you eventually think he's going to do? Can somebody answer my question?
I think we know what he's going to do. He's falling through the cracks.
Exactly. So again, and this young man looks like me. This young man looks like me and, and, and as a young black man growing up in this society, there are so many things that we have to face. And then one of the things that he's going to have to face is, is, is he going to join a gang or not? And then have you, have you been noticing these spikes of shootings? Have you been noticing this?
Yes, we have.
Okay. So this, 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 I'm passionate about this because I'm, it's, it's starting to get on my nerves. You guys have no sense of urgency. I've been at this for a very long time. It's, it's because of those young men just like that.
I appreciate that. Does, um, are you, yes, absolutely.
So just along that same line, so just the, what do you see as the timeline by which we're going to reconcile the, the standards with our report cards and the instruction that's happening in the classroom?
Yeah. So before I answer the timeline question, I do want to acknowledge fully what Mr. Cruz is saying. Um, because it's what we see in the classroom every day. And, um, I would love to, you know, when we have an opportunity, I would love to share, um, you know, with senior leadership, um, I've already shared with Superintendent Guerrero, but I would love to share with senior leadership and the, and the board, uh, some of those things that we see, that we have seen in our walkthroughs. Um, as far as, uh, you know, the work of an office, um, there's design work, um, and, and implementation work. Uh, the good news is that when I joined the district, the district had already completed this, uh, the work of developing a strategic plan. And the strategic plan is, uh, of, of, of the strategic, strategic plans that I've seen, uh, over the years and in many districts, um, is a, is a very well thought out strategic plan. So that's the goal, right? That is what I tell my department is the end goal. We want to get here. And how we, we're going to do that is first we had to look at how we are, um, aligning ourselves and how we organize ourselves as an office so that we can keep students at the center um, by, uh, redesigning our, um, subdivisions into grade bands, right? So now we have a focus on early learners. We have a focus on elementary. We have a focus on middle years. We have a focus on high school. Um, you know, again, as I said, you know, we are engaged in curriculum adoption. We have a, a clear, uh, timeline and map for, uh, what curricula are being adopted. Uh, so for example, we will have a full, um, English Language Arts adoption, uh, next year for the first time in quite a few years here at P P S. Uh, we've done the K five math adoption, um, and implemented this year. But what was missing is the six twelve, uh, portion of the adoption. And we will have that in place for next year. Um, we have begun the work, uh, you know, we have to do some groundwork, right? We can't just walk in and say we're going to develop an instructional framework. We have to first understand what it has been our past practice, um, and our past priorities. What were the outcomes of those past practices and past priorities? What are our current practices? What I shared, uh, with my team is, you know, being hired as a C A O in August, uh, just two weeks before school starts, um, I fully expected, uh, and I say this to my team with a big smile, I fully expected that there was a very clear, um, you know, uh, academic and instructional focus for the year so that I could start doing that, that leadership work of observing and, and developing and, and such. And, uh, you know, what I found is that there were still some gaps in that. Um, so, um, we had to go and do a deep dive together and have, um, observational walks. I sent my team out to observe, uh, in schools over a period of weeks and they observed over 200 classrooms and came back with some really good information. And what we see and, uh, identify in those gaps will then be used in bringing us together collaboratively to build an instructional framework. Uh, the instructional framework is targeted to, uh, be in completion. Uh, we'll be doing some work all year long, uh, through June. And then we have to start socializing and norming and training and developing around the instructional rate framework. So while, while the framework, I may give you a timeline to say the framework will be completed here. Uh, it still takes, uh, another, uh, set of timelines to ensure that we are training and norming practices, uh, that align to the instructional framework. And all of this work is pointing us back to the strategic plan. Um, we are looking at deeply the, uh, graduate portrait, um, and backwards mapping. What are the, uh, characteristics and dispositions that we need to see in our students across grade bands and by the end of particular grade years, right? Because then that will then level up into who our graduate, uh, presents themselves to be uh, when it's time for them to leave our system. We are also aligning our practices to the educator essentials. Um, I have, uh, I will be and have, um, acquired the, uh, the division of teacher professional learning, um, to kind of fill that gap, stopgap, um, that, that I observed. Is that we need a full division that is dedicated to, uh, the training and development, coaching and mentoring of teachers from the time they enter into our system as student teachers, uh, to the time that they retire. So that there will be ongoing development, um, and support for them at any stage of their career or, um, you know, of their practice. Um, so these are some of the things that we are doing now. Um, but as you know, that with, with planning, we plan for this year. We implement, uh, for next year. And then for each subsequent year, uh, we will continue to build on those plans.
So if I could add just one other thing, um, so I, the reality is, um, students get, um, you know, the sense of urgency about the start and the end of a year for a student. It's one, it's one time through seventh grade. It's one time through eighth grade. Um, so part of what we are working through as well, um, is, uh, we've been working with our, both with, uh, with some teachers and also with administrators on three critical areas that we're looking at and, um, over a course of time that we will contain, uh, maintain this thread. So one is around student engagement. How are we connecting with students, making them feel seen, heard, um, valued, cared for in classrooms? How does that show up? What does that look like? Second one is around culturally sustaining pedagogy to earlier, Mr. Cruz said, what are we, are, have we looked at, um, how students are seeing themselves in the curriculum, in the, in the educators who are in front of them, or in the practices that we value in the classroom? And then thirdly, and this is really about communication, um, to Director Brim Edwards' point, how do parents, families know, like, what are the indicators that a student is making progress? Um, where are there areas of concerns? Where are there areas to celebrate? And so we've been looking at grading practices. One of the things that we, has been laid bare through the pandemic has been, um, how do we know what kids know and how are they demonstrating that understanding? And I think that, uh, those areas are showing up in a, and that sense of urgency. There's a moment right now where we have seen, um, um, a real call to, what do we learn through those, this past, um, well, we're going on three years now, but the past couple of years as we've worked through the pandemic. What Mr. Cruz is talking about, so we've had, we've had calls to action, uh, in supporting our students of color for a long time. So it should, we should see some things now, um, that, that are, uh, building, uh, some changes. So yes, we want frameworks and absolutely we need those, absolutely that, uh, taking it broad is going to be very important and there should be some things that we can point to and see now. Because there's, we have seventh graders only once in seventh grade. So it's that combination that I think, uh, of planning and urgency that we're going to have to, um, wed.
Um, thank you for that. In, in the interest of time, do I have?
Superintendent Guerrero.
Oh, Superintendent.
I'll just take a moment. I won't belabor a chair and directors. Um, I think Dr. Proctor started to outline, uh, many of the pieces here. What I've always appreciated about, uh, Mr. Cruz, because at least since my administration started here, I know that he has been persistent and vigilant about calling out the key questions we were asking in our initial walkthroughs, that there was an unevenness, that there was a variability in the educational experience and the opportunity gaps that that produces, gives you the achievement results that, that are uneven across student groups. And so there's a lot of pieces to that, uh, C I A curriculum, uh, instructional framework, a balanced assessment system to drive school and district level improvement uh, and an alignment of resources. That, that's sort of in a nutshell, you know, how, how quickly we get there and seeing a counter narrative depends on how focused we are and how priority, how prioritized we are in our time and effort and in the work that we do to drive the reform that we want to see, uh, to see a different kind uh, of outcome for, for our students that we share. Uh, an urgency for, uh, or we wouldn't have made it our theory of action at the center of our strategic plan. And so it calls out four themes that are intended to build the organization's capacity, uh, to put in place not just the standards-based instruction and high-quality instructional materials, but the kind of culturally sustaining pedagogy and student engagement, uh, that is going to make the difference. And we have to adjust all the tools in the system. We need a more equity-centered report card, right? We've got to get rid of that zero that averages out. It's the conversation that, uh, that Regional Superintendent Calvert is leading with our high school principals who I know share our passion about, uh, this is about giving kids the opportunity to learn and sort of acknowledging that they've mastered a standard objective, not to punish them because of some arbitrary percentage or assignment date. So it's all of these conversations that we need to have. And just to check our own understanding, if we had the time to really dive into a really important conversation, as we've brought in third-party independent organizations and partners that we're working with right now, they have been very validating in their observations. Or we're, we're not just imagining this, the kinds of things that Mr. Cruz points out that we have observed for ourselves about how to sequence the work that we need to do. Uh, we're hearing third parties sort of also, uh, pointing out, uh, the same observations. And so, um, I don't know, there were, there were pieces that, uh, there are components of this work that take, that have to occur over time. You have to scaffold and sequence them. And so after you assess and diagnose where you are, you realize you've got to return to the basics to build up. You can't, you can't just wave your wand, uh, and make it so in a year or two. But if you stay focused, um, and, and, and you, you start to put in those pieces, um, then, then you can really start to see acceleration. And so there isn't, there isn't a time like now when we really need to start doing that. Because as we hopefully start to normalize the school experience for our students, especially our most vulnerable students, uh, our attentiveness to these issues can't waver, uh, or, or we're just going to be admiring the problem. And I don't think anybody in this administration is interested in sort of standing still. Uh, so, so I appreciate the reminder from Mr. Cruz continually about, um, you know, are we, are we keeping our eye on the prize?
And I think, Mr. Cruz, you can continue to hold us accountable to that as a board. As you said, these are the things a lot of us ran on. And when you see us start to get distracted by things other than this, you know, um, education gap, really focusing on our students and their success and their academics, um, I think you and the rest of the public will be calling us out on that and, and I hope that continues.
I want to, um, wrap us up right now. If you have something to add that hasn't already been said. Um, Mr. Cruz, I wanted to thank you for, okay, I'll let you go ahead before I wrap.
Okay. I just want to put in a quick plug here because we're in an unprecedented moment, both in terms of the learning loss that our students have experienced with the pandemic, but also with the federal funds that have come to us. So when I think about the student that is the, in school with Mr. Cruz's son and so many students like that boy, whose gaps have just been compounding. Dr. Adams, this is exactly what we talked about when we looked at the data a few weeks ago about how it just, those gaps compound over time. Um, so it's all about differentiated instruction and how do we give that kind of remedial support and help to those students who are, who are behind so they don't just continue to fall further behind? So we have an opportunity this summer with summer program.
So we have an opportunity this summer with summer programming, we have an opportunity with high dosage tutoring or whatever you want to call it, but we have funds available to really, you know, try to address these even down to an individual level. And that's, I mean, if we can find the people to do the jobs, which is a big if. So I just want to kind of apply that pressure here and say, this is the problem, this is the challenge, and let's be really creative about how we use the resources, which we never get to say that, we never have the resources, but we do, we do now. So I hope, I hope we can apply them to exactly the problem that you have brought to light, Mr. Cruz.
I'm going to wrap us up here by thanking Mr. Cruz for your patience in bringing this forward for years, for pointing out the systemic issues, not that, you know, the tutoring doesn't help and the extra funds help, but highlighting the systemic issues. I'm hoping that you'll be made, not, not be made whole, but that we'll be able to address your concerns by having regular check-ins with the area superintendent, with Dr. Proctor, and with your children's teachers. I'm also hoping to get regular board updates. I understand the complexity in delivering a project schedule for this, but I, I think all of us would appreciate having, you know, regular check-ins a few times a year to, to hear about the progress against those goals. And I want to, we're going to have to, we're, we're way out of time now, so I'm, we're going to, the board will now vote on complaint number 2022-01. Does, does the board uphold the district's findings that concerns about the implementation of the GVC are inconclusive, and the district staff will work with school administrators to support teachers and their use of MAP assessment data and the use of the GVC? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? That was a long motion about what the district was going to do.
Yeah, and I'm kind of confused on what happens next. Like, I, I heard a lot of people repeat what I stated, but I heard, I didn't really hear any substantial solutions. And even with the low-hanging fruit in terms of the syllabus, the syllabus is not aligned, it's the report cards, these little small things like that, that I feel like we can create some type of timeline for. I didn't hear anything along those lines, I just heard everybody just kind of agree, but there's no solutions.
Mr. Cruz, I'll just speak for myself. I'm not an educational professional, I'm a mom that had a kid that slipped through the cracks, which is why I'm here. And so I, I meant to-
But you ran, you ran on-
Yes, I did, because it's, it's a great concern to me, as it is to, I think, a lot of us up here, but I have personal reasons for being extremely concerned. And so I think that what we can do in our role as board members is we can hold staff and the administration accountable for providing regular status updates. That's one thing we can do. When you're talking about putting these other, you know, reviewing the syllabus and aligning, that, that is not my area of expertise, I'm relying on the other people, the professionals in the room, to, to fill me in on, on how that's going. So I'm, I'm not making a promise, except a promise to hold, you know, all of us accountable for putting those updates on a calendar. And I want, I want to appreciate you also for, you know, explaining where you see the gaps are, because that's, that's something that I don't know. And I don't know if anybody else here does, but I don't understand how, in fact, I'm actually wondering now whether the data that was shared with us fully captured the, the other students who are also passing and getting high grades but not, not doing well on tests. So I'm, I'm, I'm curious about the fidelity of the data that was shared with us, I'm starting to wonder about that.
I think that, from watching that, it did, it did capture that, the data that was shared with us by Dr. Adams.
Absolutely, because it's based on the MAPS data.
But Mr. Cruz shared with us that his kids are doing well but not passing the state, the test.
That's the form, from formative assessments in the classroom.
That's what you saw in the data.
So, okay, thank you. So, so, Mr. Cruz?
I have, I have a quick question.
Yes, thank you.
So I, I kind of hear, understand what Mr. Cruz is asking. We, we, we already know the problems, the problem's been existing for decades, this is not new. I think he's, I think, let me know if I'm wrong, Mr. Cruz, is that he's, I think he'd really want to know, like, how we, how we plan to make sure that GVC is done with fidelity? Like, what is that plan? What are those steps? Not just repeating what, we know what the issue is.
And I think that's what Dr. Proctor spent, like, half an hour explaining to us, was what those steps are and what that's going to look like. And, and I don't think we do have a timeline, I think because of the pandemic and because of some of the work, but, I mean, that's what I heard, was her saying, this is what we're going to do and this is how we're doing it.
I, I heard that as well, that it would be difficult to bring a list of items and a, like a Gantt chart, is that correct?
Correct.
But Dr. Proctor did agree to bring regular updates to the board so we can look at, we know what our goals are, our board goals, and will be able to update us on the progress against those goals.
Absolutely, more than happy to.
And so I'm going to go ahead and reread the board, oh.
I was going to second, because I know we have a-
Oh, thank you, okay.
I'll second the motion and you can read it again.
Okay, so the board will now vote on complaint 2022-01. Does the board uphold the district's findings that concerns about the implementation of the GVC are inconclusive, and the district staff will work with school administrators to support teachers in their use of MAP assessment data and the use of the GVC? Do I have a motion?
Moved.
Okay. Director Lowry moves, and Director Scott seconds the motion to uphold the district's findings. The board will now vote on complaint 2022-01, whether to uphold the district's findings. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All in favor, please indicate, all opposed, please indicate by saying no.
I didn't vote. I think I'm going to abstain because I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around voting on a finding that something is inconclusive. I mean, I take it to mean it's in progress. It's not an acceptance or rejection of the underlying issues that Mr. Cruz has raised. So actually, I think I'm going to vote no. Sorry.
Do I have it correct? We have?
So, Madam Chair, I was, I was a no as, as well.
Okay, that's what I, I was, I thought it was a five, two.
And I'm just going to explain, since we didn't have after-the-motion opportunity to discuss, it's more the form of the motion, because, and I'm not at all opposed to, I think, the second half of what you shared, which is that, again, we didn't see the motion in advance, so I'm, I'm not at all opposed to school administrators supporting teachers and their use of MAP assessment data, and use of GVC. But the first part, I, I'm not sure the first, what we were asked to be upholding was actually the full substance of his complaint, so.
I, I agree, it's, it's worded in a way that's-
That GVC was inconclusive, and I think there were a number of other issues raised. So I say, I just want to explain my no vote, and it's not at all, I'm 100% whatever it is that the educator, educational leaders say we need to do to, and what resources you need to address this, I'll be very much in supportive, but I don't, I don't agree that, with the first part of the motion, which is that it was inconclusive, and I don't think that was the summary completely of his, his complaint. Thank you.
Thank you, and I apologize for that misstep. The board has upheld the district's findings by a vote of two to zero with no abstentions. Five to two, I'm sorry, did I just read?
You said two to zero.
Two to zero, I'm sorry. I don't have dyslexia, I've just getting, I'm getting family texts that aren't super positive right now, so apologize for the distraction. The board has upheld the district's findings by a vote of five to two. And will adjourn for now and take a five-minute break, please.